Finney Committee developed tribal consultation plan, tribal consultation plan. Whose purpose as stated to develop a consultation relationship. And operational protocols between the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. And US Air Force for cleanup of the Air Force retained area of the former Badlands Bombing Range. Whereas the tribal consultation plan accommodated the Ogallala Sioux Tribe's goal of cleaning up the. BBR Air Force re- retained area to ensure that the area is safe for reuse. To protect human health and the environment in the process and to facilitate the return of the land. Whereas Ogallala Sioux Tribe and Ellsworth Air Force Base mutually agreed upon the tribal consultation plan. By having the signing ceremony on June twenty-sixth, two thousand eight at the White River Visitor Center. Whereas Ogallala Sioux Tribe Natural Resources Regulatory Agency Director has called upon Ellsworth Air Force, Air Force Base. To provide tribal consultation coordination funding. Whereas the air command, air combat command and Ellsworth Air Force Base. In their efforts to clean up the Air Force retained area and continue collaboration with the Ogallala Sioux Tribe has identified tribal. Coordination funding in the amount of three hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars and no cents over a five-year period. Sixty-nine thousand four hundred from zero eight nineteen twenty-four through August eighteenth twenty twenty-five. Seventy-two thousand option year two from August nineteenth twenty twenty-five through August eighteenth twenty twenty-six. Seventy-five thousand four hundred option year three from August nineteenth twenty twenty-six through August eighteenth twenty twenty-seven. Seventy-eight thousand four hundred option year four from August nineteenth twenty twenty-seven through August eighteenth twenty twenty-eight. And eighty-one thousand four hundred dollars fifth and final year option from August nineteenth twenty. That should be twenty twenty-eight through August eighteenth twenty twenty-nine. So need to make that change to that whereas, whereas this contract will be utilized to assist in the operation. Of the Badlands Bombing Range Department to administer the contract, serve as a point of contract. Provide education and safety outreach, serve as repository reports and complete other continued tribal coordination. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe based upon the recommendation. Of the OST Land and Natural Resources Committee does hereby approve the contract to be awarded to the Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Through the Natural Resources Regulatory Agency Badlands Bombing Range Department. From the US Air Force through its fiscal agent, the US Army Corps of Engineers Albuquerque District. For tribal coordination for the cleanup efforts. On the Air Force retained area of the former Badlands Bombing Range in the amount of three hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars and no cents. Effective August nineteenth twenty twenty-four through August eighteenth twenty twenty-nine. We have further resolved that the tribal president or the vice president. Or the vice president in the absence of the president is hereby authorized to sign the contract between. Ogallala Sioux Tribe and the US Army Corps of Engineers Albuquerque District which can, which contract is attached here to. And incorporated by reference here, here in certification.
Motion made Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Watkins. Secretary call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Jimmy. Ramona DeBrey.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman. David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears. Don, um, Donroy Ghost Bear. John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Thank you Russ, thank you Council, that's all land offered lengthmate.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so moving on, next agenda item, I'm gonna turn it over to the Finance Chair, Councilman Dreamer.
Thank you Chair. First one. First, first item, resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council, Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Requesting the removal of the Bureau of Indian Affairs Superintendent, Superintendent Gina DeVille. Like Russ, I'll skip to down to the first, the first three and go on to fourth. Whereas. Despite numerous meetings and letters, the BIA remains unresponsive to multiple concerns raised by the OST. And whereas Superintendent Gina DeVille's leadership has failed to significantly. Correct any of the ongoing issues and it's, and is contrary to the best interest and general welfare of Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Will therefore be resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby on behalf of the members. The tribe request immediate removal of Gina DeVille as a superintendent for the primary agency of the Bureau of Indian Affairs.
Is that a motion, Councilman?
I didn't make no motion.
You have a comment? Okay, go ahead.
You know, ever, um. I don't agree with this, uh, resolution that's being presented. Whenever this was at Finance Committee, um, I told Tyler, I said, you need to control this meeting because this wasn't even on the agenda. It wasn't on our agenda, there was not even a reason why it was being discussed, there was no factual information presented to us. And. Because of the majority of the reps that were there to vote on this, voted on it and passed. Um, it passed to bring it to council, but it passed with no facts, no reasons given. So, you know, I think the motion makers on this resolution should come forward. And tell why they wanna do this, um, why they wanted to do this action. What's their justification for this motion other than having a majority vote at a Finance Committee that day? Um, you know, as council reps, we're not perfect, but we sure like to point fingers at everybody for. Different actions that they do, but we can't even point fingers at ourselves, um, you know, I think. Um, Ms. DeVille is a very highly respected individual in the BIA office. She comes from a very respected family, she comes from high education. She gets a lot of work done as superintendent of the BIA. And I didn't think this was fair that this action was taken against an individual based on no factual information. Um, you know, there's a lot that I could say about it, but because I'm always looked at as the bad guy on council because. I point out, um, faults of our council reps for the actions that are taken, um. You know, I just, I'm not gonna, not gonna go there today with, um. What I need to say about us as council reps, but I do want. The council reps who did make this motion to step up and say why, thank you.
Uh, right now, I don't see we have a motion on the floor here. So, with that, I'm, I'm gonna go with, uh. Councilman Little Dog, Councilman Tapio, Councilman Carlo, and Councilman Steele.
You know, it, to me, it's not, it's not the individual, it's the whole. Department of the BIA that it's really hard to, to work with. You know, we had our own tribal members sitting in these positions as a superintendent that never came to meetings. You know, I see Ms. DeVille at all our council meetings, see her at committee meetings. When she's requested, she comes over, we couldn't even get that out of our own tribal members. And, and if there's things that we're requesting or need, you know, the, the BIA has a whole different system. But you know, if you go over and, and go into their office and meet with them. You know, she, she does, she works with you, I, I think it's just us. I think it's us on our part, but I think, um, it's the whole BIA system. You know, we're talking about taking them to court, suing them, you know, our IHS. Is the worst ever and, and, and I don't blame the, the individual in charge, I, I, it's just the system. And, and that's just the way I see it and. Like Anna said, you know, uh, Ms. DeVille's always been respectful to us. Even when we give her a hard time, she's still respectful to us. So, I mean, I, I don't get it either and, and that responsibility is on the barrel if they're going to terminate her for anything. But, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we, um, table it.
Second.
Okay, so. Well, we already have a motion to table, so I'm not gonna go any further than that, so, uh, and then we have a second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Secretary, secretary call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Jimmy.
Yes.
Ramona DeBrey.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Just to table it?
To table.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
No.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman. David Poyer.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
John Steele Senior.
No way.
Garfield Little Dog.
Yes ma'am.
Craig Dillon.
Ten yes, five no, one not voting, motion carried. Issue is tabled.
Alright, the second one is, um, resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Authorizing the filing of a lawsuit against both the Bureau of Indian Affairs or the. Indian Health Service for failing to meet their trust obligations, also be skipping down to the fourth whereas. Whereas both the Indian Health Service IHS and the Bureau of Indian Affairs BIA have trust duty obligations to the OST. And whereas despite numerous meetings and letters, both the IHS and BIA. Remain unresponsive to multiple concerns raised by the OST. And whereas the OST Finance Committee has determined that it is necessary to commence litigation against the IHS and BIA. For their numerous breaches of trust duty as diplomacy with the agencies has been unable to resolve their failures. Therefore be it resolved that Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby authorize the legal department to obtain legal counsel. To undertake litigation against both the IHS and BIA for failure to meet the numerous obligations. Under their trust duty to the OST.
Do we have a motion? One wants, one.
Motion, like I said, it's the system.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Little Dogs, by Council, Councilwoman Carlo. Question?
No, I second that, but, uh, those individuals ain't taking up for our people and their trust responsibility. In all areas of their property, their rights, they have as much responsibility on this reservation as the tribe does. They have the authority to help our people because of the treaty to work directly with the people and their property. Their rights. And they're absent.
Secretary call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Jimmy. Ramona DeBrey.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Epstein.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Sorry, George, I didn't catch.
Yes.
Thank you. Robin Tapio, not voting. Tyler Londonman. David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Uh, not voting.
Donroy Ghost Bear. John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Garfield Stew, our little dog.
I'm sorry, Gar, Garfield Little Dog.
Eleven yes, one abstained, four not voting, motion carried.
The third item, resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving. One hundred thousand dollars from the marijuana tax revenue for the twenty twenty-four youth baseball leagues. I'll be skipping down to the fourth whereas also. Whereas the Guadalajara Youth Baseball and Softball Leagues engage a significant number of tribal youth to provide a positive summer youth activity. Whereas the Guadalajara Youth Baseball Leagues presented a detailed budget of need for the twenty twenty-four season. As the Finance Committee reviewed the request for financial assistance from the baseball softball leagues. Recommends approval in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council has determined that the provision of such funds. Is within the priority set for the expenditure of the marijuana tax revenue. Now therefore be resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby authorize. Expenditure in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars of the marijuana tax revenue funds. To be provided to Guadalajara Youth Baseball and Softball Leagues for the twenty twenty-four season.
Go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
George, which, what, uh, I know it's for baseball, but to be used for what?
Pay the coaches, I believe, equipment, um. They, they had a budget, I don't know if it's in here, but. They had a budget of all it's gonna be used for? Not seen it in here.
Then who's, who's could be in charge of it?
It was Nick Hernandez and Amy Pons were the two running it.
So, is there's a, is there a process to get access to it, like say when they're. Something they have to come in and get cash or we're just giving them a hundred thousand dollars?
Councilman Goldsberry and Councilman, Councilwoman Tapio.
Thank you Chairman, you, you know, we, um. Can't remember if it was last week or the week before, we made a motion to. Divide the, um, cannabis money up into categories and. I remember we has ordered on the full council to get approval, but I don't see it in here. And that's, and that was part of the, um, process. Where these guys were supposed to have their budget, but they did, I remember at the time, but it was supposed to come out the cannabis money. But my thing is, I think we need to divide up that money first before, before we start handing out the money, this hundred thousand. Yeah, does, does any guys remember that we were supposed to buy that money up?
Do, remember we had to change the language in the ordinance, cuz it says a tribal program. And so we were in a takeout program and just leave it open so we can help elder groups and youth groups. Cuz the way it stands, we can only help tribal programs, which is limited to elder mills, right?
So, my question is, do we need to take that step first before we handing this out? I mean. You have to. Well, I'm gonna motion to table it till we get that process set and done and. You could bring it back, maybe we could have a special, cuz the reason why I would on that special two chairs that. Was supposed to have honorings for all the, the youth that were, went to state, done all their accomplishments. I know it was supposed to have on a May, but nothing was ever done then, so maybe we could have a. Special coming up soon and do them honorings and maybe have this issue on there too. And whatever issues that need to maybe have, have a special, but, um, do a motion to table this till we get that process done. And so we don't get other people mad, so they'll be coming for money and saying, why'd you guys hand out this money to them, so.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Goldsberry, second by Councilman Watkins. Secretary call for the vote. Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Carlo.
Chair, I, I, I don't know if you'll let me ask this question or not, but was the money spent, has it been given out? That's what we're kinda asking.
Oh, we're gonna run the vote here.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Jimmy. Ramona DeBrey.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
No.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ha.
Donroy Ghost Bear. John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one no, motion carried, Councilwoman Tapio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just real quickly, I was at the meeting when this came forward and the only thing I wanna say is that I did make a motion that. You know, for years we, um, equipment, equipment, equipment. So, I made a motion that any equipment that the tribe purchases, whether it be uniforms, gloves, bases, whatever. Be, um, uh, filtered through our property and supply. So, that motion is standing, it should be on the, it should be, um, with the minutes of the meeting that day. So, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Councilman London.
Thank you Chair, Chair, I'd like to request, uh, uh, executive session.
Is, can we? Can we get, um, the reason?
On this issue here.
It's tabled at this time, right?
No executive?
If it's pertaining to this, it's tabled, so you can bring it back to the committees.
Well, I guess, um, I would just like to hear from, from Mr. Bob Palmer. On this, because it sounds like, um, the people that requested this. Has been in communication with Bob Palmer. And that they're, they're, they're getting some of this. So, that's, that's why I'm saying before it's tabled, there's a lot of things, but.
It's, we're gonna move on here cuz we're already tabled it and I don't wanna go backwards.
Alright, so Chair, I just wanted to put that out there, that was a concern, that was a concern for me, thank you.
Totally understand, thank you. Councilman.
Okay, item number four, resolution Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving the. Ogallala Sioux Tribe fringe benefit rate schedule for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. We skipping down to the fourth, whereas also. Whereas from time to time, the Tribal Council approves fringe benefit rate schedules for employees of the tribe. And whereas on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the OST Finance Committee. Of the Tribal Council approved a motion to recommend approval of the attached Ogallala Sioux Tribe Tribal Fringe Benefit Rate Schedule for calendar year. Twenty twenty-four and to forward the same to the regular session of the Tribal Council in July twenty twenty-four. And whereas having considered the matter, the Tribal Council agrees with the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Adopt this year's resolution to approve the attached fringe benefit schedule for the year twenty twenty-four. Will therefore be resolved that the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council hereby adopts the attached Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Fringe Benefit Rate Schedule for calendar twenty twenty-four for employees of Ogallala Sioux Tribe. Motion.
Hey, motion by Councilman Dreamer. Second by Councilman Watkins. Councilman Goldsberry. All for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Jimmy. Ramona DeBrey.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
David Poyer. David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Yep.
unanimous sixteen, motion carried.
Okay, the fifth item. Ordinance of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council Ogallala Sioux Tribe amending the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Loan Program Policies and Procedures. Adopted by ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-four as amended for the OST Loan Program. Long-term loan program to allow additional rewrites for employees, I'll be skipping down to the third whereas. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe has created revolving loan program to assist Ogallala Sioux Tribal officials, employees. Tribal entity employees, Guadalajara College employees and tribal contracted school employees. Those employees who paid the ten-two percent right-to-work fee under ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-four. And then, and amended in pursuit to ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-nine, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the OST Finance Committee has reviewed amending the policy on loans for employees. And recommends the approval of amendments to Part Five H of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Loan. Program Policies and Procedures to provide greater flexibility. Now therefore be it ordained, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby amend the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Program Policies and Procedures. Adopted by ordinance number twenty-two dash thirty-four as amended by amending Parts Five H. Which shall read as follows with strikes, with strikeout shown and additions of both Part Five H. Permanent employees may apply up to four rewrites per year up to the maximum allowed. At the discretion of the Treasurer and Revenue Director. And be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately and shall supersede, repeal. And replace all prior inconsistent laws of Ogallala Sioux Tribe.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Youngman. Con, second by Councilman Dreamer. Call for a vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Jimmy.
Yes.
Ramona DeBrey.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Donroy Ghost Bear.
Yes.
John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Okay, the sixth, sixth item. Okay, the sixth sixth item for finance. Resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the budget amendment for the OST Election Office in the amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and fifteen cents from the general fund and to increase the wage of the Election Commission Officer to fifteen dollars and fifty cents. I'll be skipping down to the fourth, whereas also whereas the land in order, land in order committee approved amending the election office budget in the amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and fifteen cents. The general fund as well as increasing the salary of the OST Election Commission Office Manager informed the recommendation to the OST Finance Committee for their recommendation and approval. And whereas the OST Finance Committee has recommended the adoption of the attached amendment budget for the OST Election Office on July eleventh, twenty twenty four, as well as increasing the OST Election Commission Office Manager's salary to fifty dollars and fifteen cent fifty cents per hour. And forwards this action to the OST Tribal Council. Now therefore be resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the attached budget modification of two hundred sixty-three thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and fifteen cents on the general fund for the OST Election OST Election Office. Therefore be it further resolved that the pay rate for OST Election Commission Office Manager Manager Job Description is increased to fifteen dollars and fifty cents.
Question, question, has it?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I think that um since the Finance Committee approved that, approved this resolution. I think uh from that point on, we kind of um did get a report from our acting uh Treasurer, and I don't know if we should um put this upon the general fund budget. Because right now, according to what uh our acting Treasurer said uh last week is that we are not uh really doing too good in our general fund budget. I think um that is why I wanted to re- to for him to give us a report today, but he's did text me earlier and said he can't be here today because they're getting ready for the powwow rodeo. And um he's kind of up there busy with counting money and doing all of that. So really wanted to hear from him to see what, how our budget is looking. But the way it sounds is it's not looking good, our general fund. So I really hate to put this on the general fund budget. You know, because right now we can't even um, we can't even do too much with our general fund budget right now. And so that's just my comment on it. I think we passed it then, but then now things changed. So that's kind of my comment on it.
Councilwoman Tapio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm on the same page as Ms. Weston. We had finance and some of you sitting here were in the finance meeting. You heard what Mr. Patton said. And it wasn't good. So I'm gonna motion to table this because we are also having a working session, I believe on the eighth and ninth, is that correct? On the eighth and ninth at Prairie Wind Casino, and we're gonna go over um our salary scale and different things like that, all the financial things. So um based on what the Treasurer said at the last finance meeting, I'm gonna motion to table this until after the working, finance working session. Thank you.
Okay, so that motion table by Councilwoman Tapio, second by Councilman Goldsberry. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Jimmy. Ramona Debray. Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior. Anna Halverson. Ella Giancarlo. George Dreamer Junior. Robin Tapio. Tyler Londonman. David Poyer. Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Donroy Ghost Bear. John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
While we ask three no, one not voting, motion carry.
That's it for finance. Thank you, Chair and committees.
Just thank you, Councilman. Okay, moving on to agenda. Uh at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to HHS Committee, Chair.
So this is um resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the memorandum of agreement between and among the Great Plains Area Indian Health Service and the Oglala Sioux Tribe for sanitation facilities project GP twenty-four G sixty-five in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. To provide individual water and sewer facilities for estimated twenty-one new and like-new homes there at the Pin- Pineridge Indian Reservation. And I'll go down several sentences. Whereas the Health and Human Services Committee is a standing committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council who oversees and approves the Indian Health Service Martinfield Office Construction Contracts relating to the tribe. And whereas on May tenth, twenty twenty four, the tribe submitted a project request to the IHS requesting assistance under Public Law eighty-six one twenty-one for the construction of individual water and sewer facilities for estimated twenty-one new and like-new homes on the Pineridge Reservation. And whereas the Health and Human Services Committee met on June eleventh, twenty twenty four and considered and recommended approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the IHS for project GP twenty-four GP G sixty-five, construction of individual water and sewer facilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe in the best interests of the tribe and its membership hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the Director of IHS Great Plains Area Department of Health and Human Services under Public Law eighty-six dash zero um one twenty-one. Seventy-three stat two sixty-seven for project GP twenty-four dash G sixty-five for construction of individual water and sewer facilities for an estimated twenty-one new and like-new homes on the Pineridge Reservation in amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars. And be it further resolved that this resolution is referred to the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council for final approval, motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Halverson. Second by Councilwoman Littlehawk Weston. Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Jimmy. Ramona Debray. Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior. Anna Halverson. Ella Giancarlo. George Dreamer Junior. Robin Tapio. Tyler Londonman. David Poyer. Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Donroy Ghost Bear. John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Unanimous sixteen, motion carry. Okay, moving on to the next uh Councilwoman, was was that it for HHS? Okay, so again, we'll turn it back over to uh Councilman Dreamer.
Thank you, Chair. Oh, can I look forward to Mr. Brianna Braveheart for five minutes?
Oh, yes. Can someone give her a mic?
Wopilatanka, Councilman Goldsberry for relinquishing your time and giving me the floor to be seen and heard. I would like to greet each and every one of you with a handshake from my heart. My name is Brianna Braveheart. I am nineteen years old and my Lakota names are Black Cloud Woman and Black Hills Brave Buffalo Woman. Um, my my parents are Candace Brings Plenty and BJ Braveheart. My grandparents are Floyd Brings Plenty and Maria Stands evenly Braveheart and Robert Braveheart Senior. Um, and Bety wash day President Stark comes out um and tribal council representatives, I'm addressing you as an enrolled member and member enrolled member and member of the Waqamani District and a leader member of the International Indigenous Youth Council Oglala Koto Chapter. I have spoken in front of the tribal council numerous times, on numerous occasions. The first time was when I spoke at the youth tribal council meeting during President Killer's administration. I asked for the council to create an OST MMIW task force, and it was voted unanimously in favor. I even recall Wounded Knee Representative Garfield still going on record to lead this initiative. I addressed the council when I was a senior in high school and now I'm a student body president at the, or sorry, excuse me. When I was a senior in high school, student body president at Pineridge High School, and now I'm getting ready to return to Santa Fe, New Mexico for my second year of college at the Institute of American Indian Arts where I've been elected to be our student body government and will be returning as the new IAI student president. This brought, this brought me to hold myself and the IOIC International Indigenous Youth Council accountable to our commitments and unfinished business. When I last addressed the council my senior year in high school, we came from my student-led walkout. We asked the tribal president to declare a state of emergency for the health and well-being of the youth and the Oglala Koto Sioux Tribe. I am concerned for our youth, education system, mental health resource programs, sustainability, preparation for life beyond high school. We need more resources, and I understand y'all are on a budget, the general funds budget. We need more from y'all, or we need y'all to pass legislation and delegate young leaders to be in positions to contrib- to contribute to creating change and empowering our districts. But we need more from our tribal council representatives. We are not a sovereign nation when we only survive on allocated funds from the federal government. We need grant writers for each district to seek private funding's grants and foundation funds. We can't go back to business as usual after the powwow was over this weekend. I also want you council representatives to be more supportive of the youth and our assistant requests. Please do better. We know our parents are struggling and often seek support from y'all sitting here and should be prioritized, especially when we are submitting requests as youth for ourselves. I want, I want that for all of my youth, all the tribal members. Because I have had an extremely great experience with my district councilman, Representative Goldsberry. He has assisted me and supported me through my travels back to college during um the holidays and other family emergencies, as well as supporting me through my journey to the American Indian Higher Ed Education Consortium Conference where I was placed first as an informative speech um participant while I was speaking about the boarding school eradication that still exists and the intergenerational trauma that our people go through. And maybe it's because it's first year of office and hasn't become a burnout council person, but it is leading by example. And I want all our tribal youth to feel and supported and confident that we are heard by our tribal council representatives. I plan and intend on running for tribal council rep. My mom has land in Porcupine and Oglala after I, after I graduate from college. As soon as I meet the the criteria of the age limit. For now, the IOIC OG has organized a voterish voter registration plan and getting young voters to vote in the sites for November. The IOIC OG will be organizing a candidate forum for the executive positions in October. We have already been funded to carry out this initiative by the Ben and Jerry's Foundation. The youth are watching, learning, and witnessing this council. And we will be voting in November. For now, we want updates. I came here today to follow up and request more action for mental health resources. We have them all in our communities. Elders and medicine relatives, our districts needs to be, our districts need to offer funds, stipends, or resources to our elders to share their knowledge. Your youth and elders need to have their own council or special project under this council. Us youth understand our intergenerational trauma, and we understand that there are many who yet to even understand historical trauma. But we want to learn from the elders before they are gone. And do our the next generations of elders. We lost so many in the pandemic, and we are here to speak for the youth of Oglala Koto Sioux Nation.
Um Stacy, can you read? Um, resolution, first one?
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and unincorporated tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe appointing Jeremy Frazier as the fifth member of the Marijuana Commission. And whereas sovereignty clause, whereas section sixteen of the Constitution, whereas Article Four, Section One clause, and whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted OST Ordinance twenty dash sixty-six, the OST Marijuana Control Ordinance on October twentieth, twenty twenty, and whereas chapter nine of the OST Ordinance twenty twenty sixty-six includes Marijuana Commission that is vested with authority to license and manage the possession, cultivation, transportation, laboratory testing, and use of marijuana and marijuana products. And whereas the Marijuana Commissioners shall have broad oversight and be primarily responsible for all aspects of the licensing process, including issuing and revoking license, promulgating regulations, establishing a fee schedule, and overseeing day-to-day operations. And whereas OST Ordinance twenty dash sixty-six includes, at chapter nine, states the Oglala Sioux Council shall appoint members to serve on the Marijuana Commission. And whereas the Economic and Business Committee of the Tribal Council met on the eleventh day of May twenty twenty four and voted to approve the appointment of Jeremy Frazier to the Marijuana Commission as the fifth member and recommended Tribal Council Grant Final Approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve the appointment of Jeremy Frazier to the Marijuana Commission as the fifth member certification.
Councilman Little Dog.
Just a comment, um, you know, it seems like we 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 tend to do things backwards, um. This this guy has already been meeting and voting in meetings. So what does that do to all the meetings that he made quorum? Cause my understanding was that he was making quorum to some meetings. But yeah, he was never recognized as a commissioner. Maybe that's a legal question.
The individual isn't a voting member until he's certified by the council.
Yes, but he's been voting, is my question.
I suppose if there's some issues that he's voted on that's that are, you know, someone can challenge that, appeal it, I guess. I mean, if there's five members on there and he was, he was voting and he was the a vote that uh affected an outcome. the, a vote that affected an outcome and he was not a legal voter, then person could challenge that.
And, and that's why I said some of these committees don't understand the process. But make it clear that these individuals that they're a part of the commission, but they're not until this body recognizes them. So I just wanted to bring that up.
We have motion? Question, go ahead, Councilman Little Hawk, question?
Yeah, well, that kind of, uh, brings, uh, a question to mind too is I think these have been on the council's agenda. I don't know when, uh, Councilman Dreamer, because we had no quorum in May and we had no quorum in June. And I think some of these, um, you know, our, our resolutions and our ordinances never got passed right away when they should have. But we never got quorum during those months. So to me, you know, I didn't know that Mr. Frazier was working, I guess already working as a commissioner at these meetings. So I don't know, Councilman Ajimer, is that the case? Because we didn't.
Sorry, I didn't hear your discussion.
Yeah, I said we didn't have quorum in May and June at our tribal council meetings. So these resolutions never made it through, they're just not coming through.
Yes, cause I think they couldn't get quorum.
Okay. But we still have Mr. Frazier still, like Garfield said, he's meeting with the commission?
Yes, as far as I know, he been, so.
Well, I think we should.
Motion.
Okay, we have motion by Cons- Councilwoman Halverson, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Secretary call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior? Jim Inks?
Yes.
Ramona DeBrey?
Yes.
Austin Macon Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior?
No.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
No.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman? David Poyer?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Donroy Ghost Bear? John Steele Senior? Garfield Little Dog? Craig Dillon?
No.
Ten yes, five no, we're not voting, mo- motion carried.
Stacy, can you read the next one, please?
Sure.
Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Requesting Government-to-Government Consultation with the United States Department of Commerce and TIA First Net Authority regarding cellular radio towers on the Pine Ridge Reservation. So, um, whereas a sovereignty clause, whereas the section sixteen constitutional clause, whereas the Article Four section clause, whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted Resolution twelve dash zero eight entitled in Ordinance One, establishing a centralized information technology division of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and authorizing the funding of the centralized education broadband network for Indian student, Indian schools, libraries, education administrative offices, higher education offices, Oglala Koto College and other educational institutions. Two, establishing a tribal utilities regulatory surcharge on all works of utility within the exterior boundaries of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. And whereas this resolution adopted in two thousand and twelve authorizes a reservation-wide centralized information technology system that would result in all tribal departments sharing resources to save costs for the tribe and enhance connectivity for tribal operations and the Oglala Sioux Reservation population. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe efforts to implement Resolution twelve dash zero eight necessitate information regarding existing cellular radio towers on the Pine Ridge Reservation. And whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe pursuant to OST Ordinance eleven ten believes a government-to-government consultation between the Oglala Sioux Tribe and the United States Department of Commerce and TIA and First Net Authority regarding the cellular radio towers on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation will enhance and support the tribe's broadband development efforts. And whereas the OST Economic and Business Development Committee of the Tribal Council met on the twenty-ninth day of June, two thousand and twenty-four and voted for the tribal council to formally request tribal consultation to the United States Department of Commerce and TIA First Net Authority pursuant to Ordinance eleven ten. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby formally request government-to-government tribal consultation to the United States Department of Commerce and TIA and First Net Authority pursuant to Ordinance eleven dash ten regarding the cellular towers on the Pine Ridge Reservation certification.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dreamer, second by Councilman Ghost Bear. Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jim Inks?
Yes.
Ramona DeBrey?
Yes.
Austin Macon Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior?
No.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ha.
Donroy Ghost Bear? John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Fif- fifteen yes, one no, motion carried.
Art, already the next one, Stacy. The res- the resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, Oglala Sioux Tribe to award one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents, thirty-four thirty-six cents to OLT LLC for to procure, install and configure multiple Cisco switching, wifi and VoIP networking equipment to connect to the broadband internet and public switched telephone network. I'll be skipping down to the third where, or the second whereas. Tribal Council organized Oglala Koto Telecommunications LLC as a hundred percent and tribally organized and owned limited liability corporation that operates under a board of directors and a chief executive officer. You know, as Oglala Koto Telecommunications LLC requires procurement, installation and configuration of Cisco switching, wifi and VoIP networking equipment to connect to the broadband internet and public switch telephone network. And whereas the networking devices will service OLT OST Emergency Management, OST Transit, OST Terror, OST Legal Department, OST Enrollment, OST Elderly Meals and OST Tribal Utilities. And whereas the source of funding for this project is the US Treasury Capital Projects Fund, CPF dash zero 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 one five seven eight, which awarded dispersed an initial amount of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and four dollars and a second amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-six cents to the Oglala Sioux Tribe in two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas the total amount of funding awarded and allocated for this project is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. And whereas the, the Tribal Economic and Business Development Committee has reviewed and approved this resolution and forwarded to the Tribal Council for final approval. Now therefore be resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby authorizes and awards one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-six cents to the Oglala Koto Telecommunications LLC for the procurement, installation and configuration of Cisco switching, wifi and your VoIP networking equipment to connect to the broadband internet and public switch telephone network. And be it further resolved that the tribal president is authorized and directed to sign this resolution on behalf of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And to be further resolved that the tribal treasurer is authorized and directed to pay the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars, thirty-six cents to the Oglala Koto Telecommunications LLC for the, for said purposes. Motion.
Second.
So we have motion by Councilman Dreamer, second by Councilwoman Tapio. Question?
When is this supposed to be implemented, Randy? This, this work that's laid out in this, in this resolution?
And someone give him a mic?
I believe the question is when is the Cisco, um, voice over IP, um, networking equipment supposed to be implemented? We are in the process of receiving the quotes. We've already demoed the equipment. We're, as soon as we receive the money, we're going to order the equipment. Um, I'm, I'm suspecting around two months we'll have it fully installed and operational.
Okay, cause I've been requesting a timeline for our broadband and still haven't received that for months now, so this is just something that I hope gets done. Because it's saying to connect to the broadband internet. Is that our broadband or is that somebody else's?
It's a great question, Councilman. So we have some Enterprise Starlink equipment that we're going to utilize for the emergency management system that'll connect us to the, to the, um, internet, the broadband internet. Um, some of these sites already have other internet connectivity that they'll use to connect to. Um, and to address the original question or concern, you know that we still have eight sites that we need to lease, um, that need to go through land committee, um, for the original broadband project, eight of the fifteen sites still need to be leased. So that is what is slowing us up on the, uh, tribal broadband connectivity project. Um, we hope to get that from land office to land committee and on to the full tribal council so we can lease those sites to complete the NEPA project.
Okay, cause our biggest worry I got coming up is school starting. Um, we have a lot of people that are not connected to the internet yet. So with some of these site learnings, it's going to put a lot of our people at disadvantage. And that's why I've been pushing for our timeline on our broadband. Because it's going to leave a lot of students at a disadvantage yet, and then we're holding up Golden West. And that's, that's, that's my biggest concern right now. Um, it seems like we kind of stalled out a little bit and that's what I'm pretty much disappointed about. Thank you.
Councilwoman McCarroll?
Thank you, Chairman. You know, um, just to kind of piggy off, piggyback off of what Jay is saying. You know, I was a big supporter of this, um, to begin with and, and now I'm kind of reluctant. I hate to say that, but I am. I have, um, individuals in Pine Ridge that are, are, um, coming up to me and, you know, there's a a minimal area, I guess, that they need to hook up and, and they're waiting for hookups. You know, they, they can't get the internet, they can't get, um, cable, TV, all of this other stuff that they're wanting. And every time I see this young gentleman downtown, he comes up and he asks me, and I'm sure the president's office is getting calls from this gentleman as well. So you know, I, I hope the sooner this happens, the better because, um, I think I I read somewhere, I believe that you're only on this IPA contract till the end of the year. Am I correct? I don't know if you're up for renewal on that, where it is in that process and what will happen once, um, you're done, if you're not renewed. But, um, those are kind of some concerns I have. Not only that, I was approached by, um, different individuals up at the Education Committee meeting up in Rapid City. Um, you know, they want meetings with you. I've had IHS individuals, I've had the schools, you know, all these different, um, um, individuals coming up, wanting a meeting with you, trying to get ahold of you because they want to know what's going on. Um, and they can't get ahold of you. So you know, there's frustration there too. So I think you do need to reach out to all of the schools, maybe let them know what's going on. Let IHS know what's going on. So you know, the left arm knows what the right is doing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston?
You know, um, I don't know what really to say about you know, the, this whole project. I think I've been trying to, you know, be supportive, working with, uh, Randy, trying to, um, be a part of the, um, you know, meeting with, uh, Bureau Reclamation a couple of weeks ago. Um, trying to, you know, help in a way where we can get this moving a little bit more quicker than it's moving. But you know, I also, as a councilwoman from our district, have been really getting a lot of calls about internet services. Why, uh, why can't we just get our phone service and our internet service together hooked up? I think I have, this council's been hearing me quite a bit about some of the places within Waqabamne District, like our elderly meals program still has not had a phone service or, uh, anything like that, and they've been asking. So there's just so many concerns and I think we addressed this, um, maybe a couple of weeks ago and we took, uh, made, while we, um, made a motion to ask for Randy and, uh, Ms. Hughes, our attorney out of DC to see how this would affect our working with Golden West before. And I don't know if you got that action by the finance committee, but we need to know that. And I think that, um, you know, Mr. Councilman Youngman is, um, was in that meeting that day and I think we did take action to have you guys look into that and come back, give us a report as to if it would really affect it. You know, and I think Golden West is right now, you know, as a landowner, they're also sending out letters to us landowners and they're asking for rights of way, you know, approval. And I did get that in the mail along with my siblings and they're all questioning, do we sign this or not? So I did read it and it is a right of way to enter onto our, our tribal, our, our land and, uh, to lay fiber optic. And so I'm getting all these things and so, you know, I'm really trying to, you know, be supportive, working with Randy and hoping this can, project can move forward. But again, at the same time, it's really affecting our district too. And so did you get that action from finance and did you and Jennifer look into that? Part of it, could you give us an answer on that?
Uh, thank you, Council, Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. So the, the most recent action that Jennifer Hughes and myself we've taken is we've drafted a letter together collaboratively, um, indicating that, you know, the tribe has a desire to, um, move forward with its own broadband project. And we've, we've drafted that directly to the Federal Communications Commission, um, related to the automatic funding of the, um, three landmine telephone companies on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Um, they received ACAM and ACAM two funding automatically without tribal consent. So that's our most recent action with, with Jennifer Hughes. Um, I don't know that we formally received the information from the finance committee or, or to bring some type of analysis to see what kind of impact that would have on the Oglala Sioux Tribe's broadband project. But we'll gladly accept that and, and take that action item.
I, I think it's important that we, um, that we wanted you guys to look into that and bring that back to us. I don't know if maybe you need to come back to the next finance committee meeting with it. But we really need to, uh, know how that would affect our working relationship with Golden West. Because right now Golden West, um, you know, is there and our people are waiting for phone service and internet service. And I know this project is moving along and, uh, we don't know when exactly, everybody's going to be hooked up to, um, you know, the wireless And uh broadband like uh Councilman um. Youngman is asking, so that's what we would like to know if you would be able to do that. To uh make sure that you guys can come back at the next finance meeting with the update on, on that issue.
I will clear at the next finance meeting.
And I'm also concerned because your contract ends at the end of the year. And I know that the president has told us numerous times that he requested with IHS in DC. About extending his contract, but President, we haven't heard nothing back yet. And I don't know, I know Ms. Soul said she was going to get back with us on that, so. That's another concern because you yourself said, my contract ends end of December. And so what's gonna happen after that? Puts a question mark there for us, so we need to look into these um, and so I'm hoping we can find out soon about even that, your contract. Thank you.
Um, yes, I did ask for a letter and I didn't receive one, so I'll follow up on that. She did say uh she'll extend his contract. Okay, so um we do have a motion and a second, so let's run that, or, or any more questions? Go ahead.
You know, I just wanted to thank Ms. Mr. Randy Hughes for all the um work he's done on this broadband project. This broadband project is a long-term commitment for the tribe. It has long-term goals, long ti- long-term uh longevity in providing network services to our people. You know, example of failed telephone um networking is what we've had recently with public safety and. Other departments' telephones not working, we need this internet um for our future, and I really like to thank um Waukamne District. Representative Sonia Weston for all the um advocacy she did at the BOR in Montana a few weeks ago for this project. You know, this project is multi-millions um for generations down the road. And she really spoke up and she really supported all that she had, you know, she has a lifelong. Knowledge in her brain on um these projects for utilities from our tribe. And so I really like to thank her and um applaud her for all that she's done and. Uh, Randy, for all the work that you're doing on this because, you know, this is the future, broadband is our future. And we need to think long-term, not short-term, so thank you.
Yes, uh, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanna thank Randy also for all this hard work he's doing. This is not easy, you know, we have to be patient. This is something for our future, for our children, it's, it's here. I know what they're thinking, it's not happening overnight, but it's here. So we gotta support this, I know. We want it up tomorrow, but it's just the way it is right now. This Randy's doing a lot of work. Probably doing the work of ten men, you know, if we got more help from him, we'll probably be quicker, but we have to keep this going. Thank you.
Yes, uh, I know the president's, president's office has been supporting uh Randy on this effort and it's huge. We put, invested a lot of money, invested a lot of time. Um, in setting this up from the ground up and, you know, it took a lot of sacrifice. Um, and there's, there's things in place that we also have to sa- uh, take that chance. Uh, that challenge and, and uh in order to build our own network, and that's what we're doing. So, uh, in order for us to have our own network, our own network, keyword, our own. It's, it's gonna take some sacrifice and some, so I'm just asking everybody, be patient. And I'll continue the push, so thank you for coming. Secretary, call for the vote.
Um, Mr. Dreamer, I noticed that in the resolution, the first whereas um is not like the um regular formatted. Um.
Can you insert?
Paragraph, so I wanted to insert the first three.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Who?
Jim Inks.
Yes.
Ramona DeBrey.
Yes.
Austin Macon Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
No.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Oh, no.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman. David Poyer.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Don Ray Gospair.
Yes.
John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Twelve yes, two no, two not voting motion carried.
Stacy, can you read item four, please?
Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe establishing a centralized email system. Under ogallala.gov and email system support for various Ogallala Sioux tribe tribes programs. Whereas sovereignty clause, whereas section sixteen clause, whereas article four clause. Whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Division of Information Technology was established by Tribal Ordinance twelve dash zero eight. And whereas the OSTDIT has established ogallala.gov and now has a web presence and cloud-based email presence. Tribal ordinance twelve dash zero eight requires a centralized IT operation that specifically states Ogallala Sioux tribe hereby. Creates a centralized division information technology IT with an enterprise architecture system. And which will have broad oversight over all current and future IT-related activities of Ogallala Sioux tribe. Its agent, its departments, agencies and chartered organization and include, included related IT services, grants and contracts. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux tribe desires to fully implement a centralized email system to enhance IT operations by. Directing the OST Fiscal Accounting Office, FAO, who administers. Ogallala dot org and the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Department of Public Safety OSTDPS dot org to transfer one. FTE email system administrator, IT specialist, tribal employee to the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Division of Information Technology. And report to the Chief Information Officer and CIO. The CIO will take control of the ogallala.org and OSTDPS dot org email system to. Migrate both to ogallala.org. Salary scale will be based on the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. Median ser- salary for a network and computer systems administrator. HTTPS BLS dot gov OOH um computer link. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux Tribe OST. Further desires to direct the FAO to transfer funds in the amount of point two five FTE for a cybersecurity IT. Security specialist and point two five FTE from the OSTDPS for a total of point five. Zero FTE, a cybersecurity IT security specialist to the OSTDIT. Salary scale will be based upon the Bureau of Labor and Statistics median salary for an information. Security analyst. Web link. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux tribe further desires to direct Ogallala Lakota Housing Authority. Who administrators, administers OSLH dot org. To transfer point two five FTE email system administrator, IT specialist funding to the OSTDIT. The CIO will take control of the OSLH dot org email system to. Migrate to ogallala.gov. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux tribe desires to direct Ogallala Lakota Housing Authority to transfer funding. In the amount of point two five FTE for a cybersecurity IT security specialist. And then point two five FTE from the OSTDPS for a total of point five, five zero FTE. A cybersecurity IT security spec- specialist to the OSTDIT. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux tribe desires to direct Prairie Wind Casino and Eastwind Casino. Who administers prairiewindcasino.com and eastwind dot casino to transfer point two five FTE. Email system administrator, IT specialist funding to the OSTDIT. The CIO will provide additional email system administration support. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux tribe desires to direct Prairie Wind Casino and Eastwind Casino to transfer funding. In the amount of point five zero FTE for an IT security specialist to the OSTDIT. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux tribe desires to authorize the CIO of OSDIT to contract. The email administrator to Ogallala Lakota Communications LLC. And whereas the Ogallala Sioux tribe desires all software licensing costs, including administrative licensing to be the responsibility. Of the sponsoring OST programs. And whereas the OST Economic and Business Development Committee. Of the tribal council met on the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-four. And voted to forward this resolution to the tribal council for final approval. Now therefore be it resolved. That the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby approve foo implementation of a centralized email system under ogallala.gov. And email system support by. Bullet one, directing the FAO to transfer one FTE email systems administrator to OSTDIT. And for the OSTDIT to take control of the ogallala.org and OSTDPS dot org. And migrate both to ogallala.gov and bullet two directing the OFAO to transfer point two five FTE for. Cybersecurity specialists and point two five FTE cybersecurity IT from OSTDPS. Total point five zero FTE to OSTDIT. And bullet three directing the OLHA to transfer point two five FTE email spec-. Email systems administrator, point two five FTE cybersecurity specialist and point two five. FTE from OSTDPS and OSTDIT. And bullet four, directing Prairie One Casino and Eastwind Casino to transfer point two five FTE email system. Administrator and point five zero FTE security specialist to OSTDIT and. Point five, bullet five directing sponsoring OST programs to cover software licensing costs, including administrative licensing. Certification.
Motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Councilman Dreamer, second by Councilwoman Halverson, Councilwoman Tapio. What's, oh, you're second, okay. Go ahead, uh, Councilman Youngman.
The question I have is all the, does all these other entities in agreeance with this? I mean, has there been any communication with this because I think there needs to be a meeting set down with all these other IT officers first.
President.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Randy.
Um, Councilman, the, the Ogallala Sioux tribe has directed under twelve dash zero eight to centralize the IT. Um, operations of the entire Ogallala Sioux tribe and specifically outlining this. There had been previous meeting, bringing all parties together to discuss the centralization of the services. And um, y- y- you know, so then there was a second ordinance to make this happen and direct our operations to make this happen. It's just a slow process, um, but we haven't had a recent meeting, but we've had some recent disruption of email services, so the time felt right. And we did get ogallala.gov operational.
Oh, Councilwoman, go ahead.
Sure. You know, I think that um. A while back when Randy was first starting out, there was a meeting held in Rapid City at Holiday Inn. And I know there was, the, I think he invited a lot of these entities there. But during that time of the meeting, they all had questions about it. And their concern was going under one umbrella of the tribe. They did not want to do that. I know some of the. The uh tribal charter schools, I think Mr. Phelps was there, Stacy Phelps. And there was others that spoke out on it. Now, Mr. Miss, Councilwoman Carlo just mentioned earlier that she was approached by. Education committee people, and they're concerned about it. So I think that. I don't know, Randy, if you went out again and did another meeting with all of these entities, cuz this involves the tribe too. If you look at it, the IT within our own tribe is gonna fall under this. Once this is approved, all these entities are gonna fall under that one umbrella that the tribe pushed. For this grant last administration or the administration before that. And when Golden West was put aside and we went with this grant, now this is what we have him doing right now. And he knew that when he took this job, it's gonna be hard because he's gonna come across all these questions. Because right now today, there's gonna be changes and there's gonna be changes upon our entities within the tribe. So my question is, what, do we want our own phone company? And do we want to operate it under the Ogallala Sioux tribe or? Do we not want that? Because that's something right now today, that's a question because all these entities are gonna fall under. His um, the project, right, the, the, his, and he's sitting over there worried because he knew these questions are gonna come up. So today, the council needs to decide on that because I'm getting text messages and our tribal members are saying, but we are still stakeholders. Within Golden West. You know, Golden West is a cooperative, it's a co-op. We own them, we own that company, the people do. That have phone service and have in uh internet services, we own that company. We're, it's a co- co-op. So today, we wanted our, our own phone company, so this is where it is today. So we better make some decisions today because we brought him down here from DC and borrowed him to do all this work for us. That's why I'm saying today, you know, we still got Golden West, we left that up to the, the people to say whether or not. They wanna still use Golden West or they're gonna fall under the tribes. Being the uh their provider for uh communications, telecommunications, but we're not there yet, Randy. I think you know that. But this is one step towards it, is putting all these IT under the tribe. So I don't know if you had another meeting with all these entities lately, but maybe you might need to have another. To get a clear understanding between each other if this is what. Is gonna happen and they're agreeable to it. Because right now, if we approve this, we're just telling them, you're going under. And I really don't wanna do it that way either, so if you could set up a time to meet with them and maybe we can bring this back. Would that work out better? Question to you.
Go ahead.
Uh, Councilwoman, great question, you know, um, just, just for some small clarification, the Bureau of Indian Affairs. Used to host the domain for Indian tribes, the dot gov. Um, native sovereign nation dot gov, they transferred that to CISA, the Cybersecurity Information Security Administration. So the tribal president and I earlier this year had to establish ogallala.gov that was in the ordinance that you asked me to implement. So it took quite a bit of time to work with the tribal president and his office to make that happen. Once we got that operational, then we stood up an email system underneath there. So it wasn't like we just did it overnight cuz it took a long, many months to implement this, this process. And here we are today, ready to create one email system as directed on these multiple tribal. Ordinances that you've given me to implement. Um, whatever the tribal council directs me to do, I certainly will do that. I'm here um to work for the tribal council. Um, but one email system is, is the norm today in most governments. And you would have one email system, system governing, governing the government portion of the reservation. Um, tribal programs as well as offering support to the casino. We haven't addressed the education portion. Or, or any, you know, other component of the tribe, just the government portion, but we will, we'll take any action that you tell us to do.
I still have the floor.
Yes.
I want to maybe um. Make a motion to table this until you go back and meet with all the uh entities that are listed under this um. This resolution. This resolution. And that way we, when you come back, we'll have a better understanding or clearer picture that they are. Knowing that they're gonna move in that direction. I don't wanna just pass something and expect them just to know this is changing your email. You know. Your whole email uh system, so. That'd be my motion, Mister. President to, to table it and have him go back and meet with all these entities. And then uh bring it back.
Okay, so we have motion to table, second by. Councilman Youngman. Secretary call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Jimmy.
Yes.
Ramona Debray.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
No.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer?
No.
Robin Tapio?
No.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Donroy Gospair? John Steele Senior?
No.
Garfield Little Dog? Craig Dillon?
Eleven S, five no, motion carried. It's tabled. Uh, one thing I'd like to uh comment on though is, you know, we did go down and meet with uh FCC headquarters. And then. Yes, I know, I'm just giving a comment.
Move on.
And. And everything looks good. Um, all the way from FCC to what we're, the efforts we're doing. So they're supportive. Okay, go on now. Councilman Dreamer.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Stacy, these ones need to be inserted also. For item five, so I'll, I'll read it. Resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council, Ogallala Sioux Tribe to approve a. Consultant agreement between Turtle Island Communications. Incorporated and the lawsuit tribe to complete the bulk fabric challenge for U S. D A reconnect five. P F S A using ARPO broadband funds. We'll go on to the. Second, whereas. With the exertions from Stacy, whereas the lawsuit travel. Council organized Ogallala Cota Telecommunications LLC as a one hundred percent tribally organized and owned. Limited liability corporation that operates under a board of directors and the chief executive officer. To develop and oversee broadband services for the tribe pursuant to FCC license awarded to the tribe. And whereas the lawsuit tribe is committed to enhancing broadband connectivity and services within its jurisdiction. And whereas Turtle Island Communications has submitted consulting agreement to the lawsuit tribe to complete the bulk fabric challenge. For U S D A reconnect five program funding service area. P F S A, the cost to complete this bulk fabric. Challenges two thousand four hundred dollars. Randy, is that right, that amount?
That is correct. It is only twenty four hundred dollars, but it's in Ogallala Sioux Tribe contract for the first time.
Okay. Whereas the. Tribal Economic and Business Development Committee has reviewed and approved a proposed consultant agreement between. Turtle Island Communications Inc. and the lawsuit tribe to complete the. Bulk fabric challenge for U S D A reconnect five. P F S A using ARPO broadband funds and has rewarded it to the tribal council for final approval. Therefore be resolved that the lawsuit tribal council hereby approve the consultant agreement between Turtle Island. Communications Inc. and the lawsuit tribe, the payment of twenty four hundred dollars to. Turtle Island Communications Inc. to complete the. Bulk fabric challenge for U S D A reconnect five. P F S A and be it further resolved that the tribal. President is authorized and directed to sign this resolution on behalf of the lawsuit tribe. And be a further resolve that the tribal treasurer is authorized and directed to pay the amount of. Twenty four hundred dollars to reconnect Turtle Island Communications Inc. under a voucher approved by the CEO of Ogallala Cota Telecommunications. LLC. Motion.
Motion made Councilman Dreamer. Second by Councilwoman Halverson. Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jimmy.
Yes.
Ramona Debray?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
No.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Donroy Gospair? John Steele Senior? Garfield Little Dog? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, one no, two not voting, motion carried.
Okay, and item number six. Resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council, Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving a guaranteed maximum. Price amendment to the construction contract with Loffler Construction Consulting. LLC for the government service building in the Wounded Knee District on the Pioneer Garden Reservation. So Stacy, I'll be skipping number four also. Whereas by ordinance number twenty four dash oh four, January twenty second, twenty twenty four. The lawsuit tribal council approved a contract. For construction management services between the lawsuit tribe and Loffler Construction Consulting. LLC for the government service building in the Wounded Knee District. And thereafter, the contract was executed by the parties. And as pursuant to the contract, the parties have prepared a guaranteed maximum price amendment. And whereas on July nineteenth, twenty twenty four, the Economic and Business Development Committee. Refer the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the tribal council for its review and approval. Therefore be resolved that the lawsuit tribal council does hereby approve the lawsuit tribe and offer construction consulting. LLC. For the government service building in the Wounded Knee District. Be a further resolved that the tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president is delegated authority. To execute the guaranteed maximum price amendment, the same or substantially the same form as the document attached here too.
Mister President?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. In talking with Marguerite Sacola. Um, from the project team. I think we have approval for. Uh, one amendment to the last be it further resolved clause right after the words. Document attached here too. We'd like to add the words with the approval date changed to July thirty, twenty twenty four. And the date July twelve, twenty twenty four in article A point two point one. Changed to August twelve, twenty twenty four. That's just to note that the agreement will have today's date. And there was a prior um anticipated commencement date of July twelve. And I think everyone understands that the target commencement date now for this site work is August twelve. So I would recommend that amendment to this resolution and to the next two. And I can send that language to the secretary.
Yes, please. Do we have a motion? Okay, motion. With amendments? Go ahead. Or second, okay. So we have a motion. Motion by Councilman Londonman, second by Councilman Dreamer. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jimmy.
Yes.
Ramona Debray?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Donroy Gospair?
Yes.
John Steele Senior? Garfield Little Dog? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
Item number six, same thing Stacy with the fourth was in them dates inserted of this one also. Whereas by ordinance number twenty 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 four oh four. Is that January twentieth, what Steve say?
I'm sorry, say again.
Was that January twentieth, Stacy? That Steve said?
That date's okay in that clause.
Alright. January twenty second, twenty twenty four, the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council approved a contract. For construction management services between the lawsuit tribe and Loffler Construction Consulting. LLC for the government service building in the Porcupine District. Thereafter, the contract was executed by the parties. And whereas pursuant to the contract, the parties have prepared a guaranteed maximum price amendment. And whereas on July nineteenth, twenty twenty four, the Economic and Business Development Committee. Refer the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the tribal council for its review and approval. Therefore be resolved that the lawsuit tribal council does hereby approve the attached guaranteed maximum price amendment to the contract. For construction management services between the lawsuit tribe and Loffler Construction. Consulting LLC for the government service building in the Porcupine District. Be a further resolve that the tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president is delegated authority to execute the. Guaranteed maximum price amendment, the same or substantially. The same form as the document attached here too.
And Mister President? Uh, again, we would add, right after that, we would add with the approval date changed to July thirty, twenty twenty four and the date July twelve. Twenty twenty four in article A point two point one. Changed to August twelve, twenty twenty four.
Okay, motion. Motion now with amendments? By Councilman Londonman, second by Councilman Poyer? Call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jimmy.
Yes.
Ramona Debray?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Donroy Gospair?
Yes.
John Steele Senior? Garfield Little Dog? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Unanimous sixteen, motion carried.
Okay, um. Number six. So resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council, Ogallala Sioux Tribe approving a guaranteed maximum price amendment to the construction. Contract with Loffler Construction Consulting LLC for the government service building in the Medicine Root District on the Pioneer Garden Reservation. Start on the fourth was also. Whereas by ordinance number twenty four dash oh four, January twenty second, twenty twenty four. Lawsuit travel council approved a contract for construction management services between the lawsuit tribe and lawful construction consulting. LLC for the government service building in the Medicine Root District. And thereafter, the contract is executed by the parties. And as pursuant to the contract, the parties have prepared a guaranteed maximum price amendment. And whereas on July nineteenth, twenty twenty four. The Economic and Business Development Committee referred the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the tribal council for its review and approval. Therefore be it resolved that the lawsuit tribe. Tribal council does hereby approve the attached guaranteed maximum price amendment. The contract for. Construction management services between Ogallala Sioux Tribe and Loffler Construction Consulting. LLC for the government service building in the Medicine Root District. Be a further resolved that the tribal president or in his absence, the tribal vice president is delegated authority to execute the guaranteed. Maximum price amendment, the same or s- s- substantially the same form as the document attached here too.
And Mister uh. President, we would say immediately after that, add the language with the approval date changed to July thirty. Twenty twenty four and the date July twelve. Twenty twenty four in article A point two point one. Changed to August twelve, twenty twenty four. And just. Madam Secretary, did we already um? Did the council already act on agenda item six? For medicine root?
Yes, um, I just caught that. So according to the ordinance or the um agenda. On page four, we did the Porcupine District one and we already did the Wounded Knee one. Wounded Knee one was done first.
Okay.
Mine one was. Now, and now we're on the medicine one.
Myself. Okay, great. And Mister President?
Yes.
These are, all three of these, like I indicated in my email yesterday, these are for guaranteed maximum price amendments for the site work. And Loffler. And the architects and the project team are, are working on finalizing the design. And they'll bring back another G M P amendment for the construction phase and. But it's important that these are approved so that they can. Commence the site work and then bring back the, the final phase G M P. Um. Before December thirty one, twenty twenty four. And Marguerite Sacola is on the line also if anyone has questions. But all three of these are the same.
Okay, thank you. Um, so do, do we have a motion with amendments?
Who did, who motion?
Okay, so got a motion by Councilman Watkins. Councilwoman Tapio and Councilman Londonman. Secretary, call for the vote.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Jimmy.
You.
Ramona Debray?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo?
Yeah.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Donroy Gospair?
Yes.
John Steele Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog?
Yeah.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Um, just a second, um, sixteen unanimous, motion carried. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. No, I just wanna say, uh, give a thanks, uh. A big thanks to our owners reps, the uh, the project team and. And uh, everybody that's involved with, with this project and our multi-purpose buildings, you know, it's. It's been a um. Been a lot of work and been a lot of meetings to get to this point, so. It's good to see that we'll get them off the ground, so.
Oh, thank you.
So that's it for E B N D. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Committee.
Mister Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Steele.
Yeah, I got uh, one of my. District members. Would like to speak to council. On a project he's been working on for years and years and years. Him. Uh, Mister Alex White, please.
Okay. Ah, Alex.
Hello, Mister President. Thank you for getting me to the floor. Uh, Mister President and Council. Welcome to our district. We are the Oyuqbe people and uh, before I address you. I wanna share a little uh story that happened. Right out of Manderson, there used to be a white house. And there was an elderly gentleman that lived there. Anyway, one particular day, he had a horse to sell. So he put up a sign, horse for sale. And here a little while later. Anyway, one particular day, he had a horse to sell, so he put up a sign, horse for sale and here a little while later. This white rancher come driving through and there was gravel road back then, he just kinda came to a stop and. He came up to that guy and said, hey chief, you got a horse for sale? So he said, yeah, I have a horse for sale, my horse, he don't look so good. But that rancher looked at the horse, opened his mouth, checked his ears, pulled his tail. He said, no, you got a good looking horse here, what do you want for him? So he said, three hundred dollar. So the rancher said, I'll buy him and he wrote a check out right away. Anyway, about a week went by and that white rancher came back to him and said, hey. You sold me a blind horse. So he said, yeah, I told you my horse, he don't look so good. Good one. Anyway, Mister Chairman, I uh.
That guy was from Pine Ridge.
Anyway, um. Since nineteen ninety eight, I started growing hemp, I had two failures in two thousand, two thousand one, two thousand. Two, I had some successful crops, I got some real good seeds. And I was attacked by the DEA, FBI, US Marshals, Homeland Security, the US Attorney came himself. And I was hoping that the tribe with all your lawyers, you guys would help me out, but you guys didn't. So it took me eighteen years through the federal court systems. Well, back then Congress passed a law called the Schaper Act and that law allowed. Division heads to interpret the laws that they passed. While three years ago, Congress rescinded that law, I had no way to sue the DEA, even the FBI. But today it's an open field and I don't know if you can do it, but you got high priced lawyers, I'm broke, I can't afford a lawyer. Maybe you could go backwards and look into this, cuz what the DEA FBI did was they gave you guys the Oglala Su tribe a black eye. Actually, two black eyes and the third time was a kick in the butt. But you didn't retaliate, you didn't do nothing, you just left me dangling, so I uh, I don't have the resources to take them on, but uh. For ten years, the Oglala Su tribe, we led the hemp issue around the world, every place in this world, they. Looked at us cuz we had it at one percent. In America, they had it at point three percent. Well, three years ago, I had to burn my crop cuz my crop came up at point three five, not even one percent over the limit. But that law required me to destroy it, so I destroyed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of hemp. Because of the law that you guys passed, that set me back Mister Chairman. I used to ranch, I raised buffalos and horses, I invested everything, today I'm living on SSI, I have nowhere to turn. So I'd like to ask you guys to look into your law, see what you can do. And the second issue I wanna ask is I want you to rescind that last hemp ordinance you passed. Mister Chairman, there's no way anybody can follow that law. The ninety eight twenty seven was a good law, that one was under the land office, the director, you go in there, I take a photocopy of my land. Put a circle on it with the land description, I, Alex Whiteplum's gonna grow hemp on my land allotment number and that was it, it was easy. And then at the end of the harvest, I made three reports to the land office, real good reports. I generated over a hundred and fifty thousand dollar per crop, as a latte, I thought I was doing really good. But you guys passed marijuana and seemed to pass away hemp. You know, there's more money in hemp than there is marijuana, but you guys, all you talk about is marijuana, I like marijuana, I got a permit. But it doesn't do me no good, I go to dispensary, they don't give you a break. But anyway, Mister Chairman, I don't wanna take up too much time, but I just wanted to share with the governing body here. You have a bad law, that hemp law, and it's not enforceable. That new hemp law have to test every plant, well, you know, it costs seven hundred dollars to test one plant. While one acre of plants can cost about thirty thousand dollars to do all the testing, who has that kind of money, I don't. But I just wanna call on you and I don't share no disrespect, but I'm just disappointed because we were leading the hemp industry around the world. And here we are, we're behind, Rosebud's going over, little over two hundred acres this year, their policy is only ten page, real easy to follow. And the state of South Dakota, they got over three hundred acres this year, they're the biggest growers in South Dakota. When the Oglala Su tribe, if we didn't pass that last law, we would have been up to ten fifteen thousand acres today. Generating millions of dollars for our lattes, wanna give an example from Wounded Knee, from Rocky Ford. I have relatives that live on each side of the creek, some own twenty acres, some own forty acres, some own eighty acres. And we all decided to go in, take our land out of lease and grow hemp. Well, when that new law that you passed, that put the kiboshes to us. So there's fourteen families that we could have been generating income here, not living on welfare. Not waiting for handouts, we could have been generating our own cash, but I want you to know, Mister Chairman, that ordinance set us back. And when Trump signed that Agriculture Act, what he did was he elevated the Oglala Su tribe sovereignty. Equal to the state of South Dakota, before that, it was quasi sovereign at two percent. Now you're equal to the state, you have the power, why didn't you stick to one percent THC on the hemp? Why did you lower it to the Washington standards, Mister Chairman, that makes me angrier in hell and I just have to get it out. But here I'm sitting here, living on social security, watching the marijuana stores grow. When we could have been making more money, there's thousands of uses for hemp, marijuana, you only have recreation and medical, there's only two uses. But you guys are pushing everything that way and why couldn't you make all that money from the marijuana? Use that to reinvest back into cannabis, it takes thirty two thousand dollars just to grow a hemp all the way till harvest. I used to have to borrow that money, when I made my sale, I'd pay them back, but we need investment like this. Those ordinances says only twenty percent investment, well, ain't nobody gonna come here and only invest twenty percent, they want fifty fifty one. Percent cuz it takes a lot of equipment to harvest fields, right now, South Dakota, the reservation is only growing hemp. Wheat, barley and little bit corn, well. That hemp should be just like corn or wheat or barley, it shouldn't be treated as a drug because you guys legalized cannabis. There's no big deal with the THC in hemp anymore, so I uh. I'm not a high paid salary for you guys, I could help you, but I expect you with all your hundreds of staff and lawyers. To address this situation, Mister Chairman, and thanks Mister President for getting me to the floor, I appreciate this time, wopilayo.
Mister Chairman.
Oh, wopilao, yes.
A little history. World War Two, United States government came to Pine Ridge and planted hemp from one end to the other. After the war, they took all the hemp out, but you still see it. Especially down that red cloud in Yellow Bear Canyon, uh. That, 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 people think that's bad marijuana cuz it doesn't get your eye, that's hemp. Now, Alex planted a big field. Zero percentage hemp in it. I was down there when those helicopters, those eighteen wheelers, all of those people came down there and they cut that whole field down. They filled those eighteen wheelers and they took them out of here, don't know where they took them, but they tested them. They could find no percentage of THC in that hemp. But they never did. Give Mister Whiteplum any compensation for that whole. Field of hemp they stole. They didn't tell anybody they was coming, they just pulled in here with their machine guns. And they cut down that field and took it, I was down there when those helicopters were flying around. But uh, the government owes Alex for that hemp and it was here. By the United States government during World War Two, they built whole clothes with it, they made lotion with it, they made soap with it. They did everything with that hemp they grew here. And we are sovereign. I'd like to ask Mister Whiteplum to work with Davy. On the land committee on that uh hemp law, is that where it goes? Thank you.
Yes, and I do believe they have another commissioner, a new commissioner, a director. Yes, and I did meet with some of the folks there, the, the growers and. And Wounded Knee, we talked about that. So uh some of the leadership did change and I hope we uh continue to move forward with that, uh Lisa, you had a question? Okay. Yes. Okay. All right, well, yeah, I won't be a slave driver, we'll, we'll take a ten minute break. And then we'll be back with two third items.